Okay, today is Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. I call the village board meeting order. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Fechter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Prackno.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
All board members are present tonight. Next, we move on to the pledge allegiance and the invocation. Tonight, we have our good friend Pastor Petusnik from Christus Victor Lutheran Church. Everyone, please rise. Pastor, would you please?
Lord God, one year ago this week, we had to stop meeting in person because of COVID-19 restrictions. We endured a difficult year where many people got sick and sadly, many died. Today, one year later, people can receive a vaccine right here in Elk Grove. And many people called in just today to get their appointment. God, please give us patience and hope that this will come for all people who need and want to get vaccinated, can receive their life-saving vaccine. During this past year, many of us were isolated and separated from our loved ones. We can learn from Antarctic researchers and Navy submarine officers who have experienced long periods of isolation that staying focused on their mission can help them to get through challenging times. Our Elk Grove trustees, firefighters, police officers, and village clerks have a mission to keep all the people of Elk Grove safe and healthy. As believers in God, we have a mission to love all people, even the ones who may be difficult to love. Help all of us to stay on mission. And we can stay on that mission through our Elk Grove food pantries and our houses of worship. I pray that this pandemic will soon loosen its grip over our lives and that we can be together again, enjoying life with each other. We learned through these trying times how important community is and how much we need each other. Help all of us to be less critical and judgmental towards each other and more caring and loving. Bless the decisions that are made today and that they will serve well the people of Elk Grove. Give wisdom and courage to our mayor, Craig Johnson, and to all trustees as they conduct this village board meeting. Keep all of us safe and healthy. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Pastor, thank you again. God, as always, great words. Great words for us. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We are gonna make it. We're gonna do good. And God's on our side. And now the chocolate is on your side.
Appreciate it. You have a good meeting.
Thank you. You too. Thank you. Okay, move on to the approval of the minutes of February 23rd, 2021.
I make a motion. We approve the minutes of February 23rd, 2021. Dispense with the reading.
Second by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. Our favor signified by saying aye.
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 Pose. Let the record show you an ass approval. Mayor and Board of Trustees report, tonight don't have a whole lot of things. We do have some sworn in that we're honored to do. A couple of quick things. We've been meeting with several data centers. So as we talked about before, Elk Grove being, you know, the Midwest being the second largest area for data centers in the world, Elk Grove being the forefront in the Midwest. It is out there and we're very excited about that. We're very happy to meet with them, along with some other businesses looking to locate Elk Grove. So the business community is roaring back and I think it's gonna continue to roar and we're gonna do better and better. Also, on March 4th, I actually went to the Rotary Club luncheon and had a chance to do a little State of the Village address to Otagreans. They did some Zoom. People were participating, but a lot of people were there in person. And I appreciate the Rotary Club for allowing us to do that. And then also, on March 4th, I met with Mayor Jeff Pryne of Itasca talking about some intersection improvements. So the folks that live over in Tompkins Mill by Devon and Park, that area over there, there's gonna be some nice improvements to that intersection. STP funding. We don't have to pay anything. They're gonna do some improvements for lighting, some improvements for handicap accessibility and other work. So we appreciate Itasca doing that work and helping benefit the community and that's very nice of them. Now, a lot of people have been saying, "Show me the love, show me the love." Well, Love's Fueling Station is doing the groundbreaking on Friday, March 19th. If remember, Love's Fueling Station was the one, talking to Chad Bruner, who found out about Elk Grove by watching the Bahamas Bowl. And a lot of people, the rumor mill on Facebook flying around, oh, well, they're coming. They're gonna break ground on the 19th. They should hopefully be up and operational by, for the end of the year. And again, that is a business, when it's fully up and operational, will generate at least $800,000 to $1 million a year. And tax revenue to Elk Grove, they signed a 20-year lease. Through the math, that could be $20 million to this village. A great investment, getting our name out there with the Bahamas Bowl, did that kind of return. So we're excited about it, looking forward to it, and it's gonna go great. We realize a lot of things are going on with COVID and the shots. Let me update that here real quick. As you know, everyone knows, we were finally picked to have a distribution of COVID shots here in Elk Grove Village. And I mentioned at the last board meeting, actually did a robo-call community, that we had been working on this. And we're very fortunate. OSCO Drug worked with us. We've been talking for some time. And the problem was, we get kind of short notice on this. So we were notified yesterday about 3:00 PM that we're gonna have COVID shots available a week from Tuesday, a week from today, March 16th, here in the community. It'll be, I believe Pfizer, right, Ray? It'll be the Pfizer shot, which means you get two. So if you get the shot that day, you'll be given appointment to get the second shot. So you get both taken care of. So they gave that to us. So we wanted to get the word out as quickly as possible to the public, but also done in a careful way. Even though we were notified yesterday, we did not want to get the word out too fast because what happened in other towns was if you told them the day before, a lot of people would call that day. And they would call all night, everything. And we were not set up for that. And it would be a big impact on the police call center. And we don't need that kind of thing. So what we did was, we planned on 9:00 AM this morning. We did a robo-call that I recorded. We did it by texting, by emailing, by Facebook, and everything else. And the word got out very quickly. It was all over the place. And you know, 9:30, our call center was gonna open up and people can call in and get appointments. Now, we have available 1,550 shots. That's quite a bit. This first round is for seniors 65 and over, regardless of anything else. If you're 65 and over, you're eligible for the shot. Only criteria is you have to live in Elk Grove Village. As of right now, which is 7:15 on Monday or Tuesday, the 9th, we still have almost 550 shots available. So if you're watching the board meeting tonight, call the number and get your appointment for the shot. We have almost a third of them available. So reach out and do it. The call center will be open all night. We're not closing down. So you wake up at 3:00 in the morning, call. You wake up at 5:00 in the morning, call. We want you to call to get your appointment. Now, we unfortunately went through the same dilemma that Niles, that Itasca, and many other towns went through. And that is from the influx of calls when the call center opened. Literally thousands come in. And the phone system don't handle it well. Now, we did contact our phone carrier prior to the opening of the phone center bank. We let them know what was gonna happen. We were assured everything's fine. Unfortunately, everything was not fine. Because the trunk coming in was in the day with so many calls, we had 40-some people waiting to answer the calls. We were getting in 10 to 15 calls at a time. It's like trickling in. The lines couldn't handle it. And then they were getting an answering machine saying, what was that word? What was that word they were saying?
Allocated?
Pardon?
Allocated?
Yeah. The line's allocated. The line's not allocated. Who the hell knows what that means? I don't know. But it was saying that. So we apologize. Trust me, as we're gonna be looking at all waste carriers in the very near future, we may be looking at new phone providers in the near future. You don't do that to something this important. So we got it worked out. It took some time. And now the system's up and fully operational. So if you call, everything should go through smoothly. I wanna thank the seniors that were calling, that got a little frustrated. We appreciate your patience. The good news is, there's still plenty of shots available. So if you want it, it's open for your call. Please call in. It's gonna take place next Tuesday, the 16th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. When you call and get your shot, you're given a time to show up. Please, don't show up hours in advance. 15 minutes to 20 minutes before your time is more than enough. You will get your shot. Every name we have has a shot sitting there waiting for that person. So if you should be a little late, don't worry. That shot's waiting for you. If you don't show up at all, obviously, the shot's gone. But don't be over-panicking about it. Your shot is assigned for you. It won't be given to anybody else. Try to come up 15 minutes, no early than a half hour before your time because we need space for everyone to be in there. OSCO's gonna be giving 60, I'll say it again, six zero shots every 15 minutes. 60. So that's 240 shots an hour. We'll get all the shots out in that one day. It's a whole system set up. How we're gonna organize, do it. We're gonna have our police there. Our fire's gonna be there. Public works gonna be there. Administration's gonna be there helping. All elected officials, we're gonna be there helping. We're gonna have volunteers there helping. We got plenty of people. We have wheelchairs if necessary. We have a golf cart to help you, or golf carts to help you if in the parking lot, if you need it. We will provide you whatever service and assistance you need. Just let us know and we'll help you. That's what we're there for, to make sure it helps you smoothly go through this process. So you will get your shot. Don't panic. Please, don't come too early. We can't handle that many at one time. We'll space it out right. That's why we do times. So again, next Tuesday, March 16th, 8:00 AM's the first shot given out. We go to 3:00 PM. Gotta go a little later, we'll go a little later. But everyone will get their shot. We are very optimistic, we're working very hard, that this will not be the only round of shots we give out here in Elk Grove. I hope as we have more. And as we do get more, we'll open up this window of who can come get shots. It won't just be seniors over 65. We'll be able to expand the number and the people. But we're gonna get through this together. We're gonna keep working together to get this done. And please be patient. We learned a lot with the call center. The next call center should go very smoothly. There'll probably be some bumps and hiccups on the day of the shots. We'll learn, we'll get through it, and we'll be ready to make even better for the future ones. But we can get through this and get it done. I thank everyone. And more importantly, thank all of our staff. Mr. Romo, as manager, you should be very proud of your staff. They've done a great job with the phone banking and now they're gonna do a great job, I know, next Tuesday. So again, this is Elk Grove residents only. And right now, it's seniors 65 and over. So we'll get that done. As a matter of fact, got a very nice, read it quickly, a little letter from a young lady. Mayor Johnson, I want to say thank you for the constant updates and information on COVID vaccines. It's been a trying time for everyone. The frustration trying to get an appointment has been ongoing. But I'm very happy to say, I finally have an appointment on March 13th on Oakton Street in Displanes, thanks to your alert and receiving the link to make it easier. It took almost 30 minutes, but it's faster than the hours of frustration I've had. Thank you. Keep up the good work. First name's Rose, lives here in Elk Grove. She took advantage of that robo-call I put out, where I told them to call Cook County and go online. She's getting the one, Johnson, Johnson, in Displanes at the old Kmart Center. So you know, we're gonna keep getting out as much information to you as we can and trying our best. It's very nice of Rose to take the time to thank us for informing on that. So we're good on that. Also, speaking about COVID and all the rest there. As you know, the CDC yesterday announced that people that have been vaccinated, that are in rooms, inside spaces with other people fully vaccinated, do not need to wear the masks, do not need to social distance. Today, they're talking about people that have got vaccinated, they're worried about them passing on to other people. The studies from Harvard and Israel show that people that have been vaccinated are not carriers. Very low percentage chance. So we're finding out more every day. This stuff is working. So as more people get vaccinated, if you listen to President Biden, he says, "Hopefully by the end of May, before Memorial Day, everyone that wants to be vaccinated would have been." They're saying now, by the end of April, early May, there'll be more vaccination shots available than people wanting it. If that's the case, we're excited and preparing to open things up. So our first event coming up will be Memorial Day celebration. We're going full-forward, that we're gonna have a Memorial Day at the pavilion, just like we've done in the past. Rotary Fest is looking to open up. Our concerts, yes, folks, they're looking to be coming back and we're gonna have them going here in Elk Grove. Again, we're gonna be firm, but flexible. So if we have to make modifications to make it work, we will. But we will be having our concerts this summer. They're gonna occur. And as a matter of fact, we're looking forward to play party picnic. We're looking forward to Oktoberfest. We're looking forward to our parade. We're looking forward to getting this village, this country, back to normal. This vaccine's working, it's doing what it's supposed to, and we're excited about going forward. We'll keep on top of things and stay, you're informed. Your green ribbons on your tree, leave them on your tree for now. We're still not through this. But don't throw your green ribbons out. Save them. We've got ideas, we may wanna do a celebration for the community and the green ribbons may be part of it. So hang on to your ribbons and we got some surprises maybe coming up to the village. Stay positive. Keep together. We're gonna get through this and we're excited to do that. Another thing, last thing actually, is the village is doing very well as we go through this pandemic. We're almost done with our fiscal year, which is April 30th. Up to this point, this year compared to last year to this point, though we had a great pandemic going on, our construction value in our industrial park is up $130 million. Last year to this point, we did $170 million construction. This year, $300 million. What does that mean to the village fees? We went from $2.4 million up to $3 million, almost $700,000. Almost $1.3 million more dollars collected for construction fees than last year when we weren't in a pandemic to this point. So we're doing well. We're excited about that. I think most towns have done a little better than they expected. You always prepare for the worst, hope for the best. But we're doing good. Again, as I talked about last time, I'll remind everyone again, come April, we're gonna be having a series of meetings talking about the long-term plan for keeping our roads updated, strong, safe for years to come. Same thing on flooding mitigations, private property, public property, sidewalk issues, all that. We're gonna be rolling out a very long-term plan that we've actually been working on longer than we thought because of the pandemic. We're gonna roll that out. But I've said this before, I'm saying it again. We're gonna need a source of funding on this. We've held the line on property tax for 14 years. That can't go on forever. So we're gonna be looking at some things here, but it will not be that bad. Not at all. But we gotta think long-term for this village and we're prepared to do that. So keep your eyes open to watch those meetings. We'll explain everything. We've actually surveyed every square foot of streets in this village, all 150 miles of it. We've got all analyzed, studied, prepared to be discussed, same thing in other areas. So we're getting ready to get that done. So with that said, Mr. Frankie, I would say that was quite an efficient presentation tonight?
It wasn't your best, but it was pretty good.
Okay. With that said, I wanna invite, first I'll do mine first before I have the chief come up. So let's invite, hopefully soon these will be off too. Mr. Jake Glimko to join me up at the podium, please. As people know, our boards and commissions, and in fact, we got a couple of our police and fire commissioners back there, are really like the backbone of a community. They do a lot of the hard work, they study issues, and they bring them to the board. And they do a lot of work you don't have to do then, which makes it more efficient, quicker for the village. And one of the commissions we have is the zoning board of appeals. And again, it's made up of nine residents and they look at people looking for variations and changes for the homes, the businesses, and stuff to be successful and do on their, make the better quality of life. Well, tonight, we have an opening. A gentleman has stepped down and that is Mr. Jake Glimko, here in Elk Grove Village resident, who wants to volunteer to do this service for the community. And what's nice about Jake is, it makes me feel good. He's a young married man with two young children. And it's nice to see young people stepping up, wanting to get involved in this community. And you know, it's not easy, Jake. You're gonna take time away from your family and your children, but we appreciate that because without people volunteering, we wouldn't have the village we have. And so I want to appreciate that. So tonight, I'd like to swear you in. So if you raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jake Glimko.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Zoning boards of appeal.
Zoning boards of appeal.
And the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cookin' to Page.
And the counties of Cookin' to Page.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Zoning board of appeal.
Zoning board of appeal.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Why don't you introduce yourself? Tell the village a little bit about yourself and your family?
Sure. I'm Jake Glimko. I've lived in the village for now six years. I'm in my third residence in Elk Grove in the last six years. We originally moved here out of convenience as a split of commute and fell in love with the city. And I really look forward to growing with the city with my wife, Emily, and my two children, Oliver and Grayson, who are three and one. And I look forward to this opportunity to serve my village on the zoning board of appeals.
Well, if you can, what kind of, what kind of work do you do?
I work for a research and development cannabis company.
Hey, okay. There you go.
I knew I liked it.
Okay. Well, Jake, first of all, what high school did you go to?
I went to Nequa Valley High School out in Naperville.
Okay. And what college?
Augustana for my undergrad and DePaul for my masters.
We know DePaul. What's Augustana?
What's that?
It's a religious thing, I think.
Augustana College.
What's the team?
So Augustana is the Vikings.
Well, it's religious, yeah.
Yeah. It's Division III. I wouldn't expect you to know them.
People over there with clubs and, yeah, that's, yeah, that's religious.
That's very religious. Yeah, I mean, it was founded by a bunch of people from Sweden and stuff, so I mean, to them.
Hey, Sweden, my heritage is good.
We're Lutheran though, so, or they are. I'm Catholic.
Well, Jake, here's some chocolate for the family and the kids.
Oh, well, thank you.
We thank you for your help and we look forward to working with you.
You too.
Take care. Chief Walsh. Wow, look at this good-looking guy coming down.
I'm swearing, yeah, man.
Chuck, you know, or Schmidt, you know, only three stars, right? Yeah? He can still boss you around.
Yes, he can. What would you like to do first?
Stuff from the bottom work up.
All right. So today, I'm happy and honored to make some promotions and display to the village some of our future leaders here in the department. So I'm gonna have Sergeant Mike McIntyre come down and join me here at the podium. Sergeant McIntyre's been here for approximately 16 years at the village. He was hired on July 3rd, 2006, which I find kind of ironic because you got the next day off as a holiday apparently. So nice way to start your career. Mike's father worked for the Arlington Heights Police Department for 29 years, which was, his dad was also sworn in on the same day, July 3rd, which is pretty remarkable. Mike attended the Illinois State University Bachelor's Degree in Education and he's been the recipient of several perfect attendance awards. He's been assigned to patrol where he received Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists Award certificates for his DUI enforcement efforts on the midnight shift. Mike was also a criminal investigator. He was also assigned during that time to the major case assistant teams. That's where we share detectives and investigators amongst the northwest suburbs on serious murder investigations and that type of stuff. During Mike's assignment to the major case assistance team, he received a life-saving award for saving the life of an officer that went down. So Mike is married with three children and it's an honor to see Mike promoted to a sergeant.
Okay, Mike, step up. Also a former wrestler at Buffalo Grove High School. So let me swear chief, I mean, I'm sorry, Mike, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Michael McIntyre.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police sergeant.
Police sergeant.
And the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cookin' to Page.
And the counties of Cookin' to Page.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police sergeant.
Police sergeant.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do, yes. I just wanted to start out by thanking Chief Walsh and thanking the police and fire commission for this opportunity, Mayor Johnson, and the village board. I really, really enjoy working at the Elk Grove Village Police Department. I think it's a great department. We talk about that all the time at village board meetings. And I think the biggest reason for that are the guys and gals that work at the department, the community that make it up. It's a great department to work for. I think a perfect example of the reason it is such a great department is the past couple of weeks, several members of the Elk Grove Village Police Department participated in a St. Baldry's event, which is where my hair went. It's not from the stress of being a new supervisor. But so we shaved our heads. We got a lot of support from the village, community members and employees. And we were able to raise over $11,000 for that event, which ended up being the 28th highest total for a team in the country. We also won first place for our event as a team. So I think that just goes to show people that are dedicated to the department and the community support this police department. Here today, I have my wife, Selena. I'd like to thank her just for supporting me throughout all this. There's been many times getting called in in the middle of the night, early in the morning, and she's always supported me. You know, they say that being a police officer is a stressful job due to the different hours, different schedule. And I think the only person that's harder on is the police officer's spouse. So she's been very supportive and understanding for that. So I just wanted to thank her for that. And then I also, my parents here, Mike and Cindy. I just want to thank you guys for everything, for supporting me through this and staying by me through everything. My dad, as Chief Walsh said, was a police sergeant in Arlington Heights. And I still remember when I told him that I wanted to be a police officer and that was the career I decided on. He said what any supportive police officer would tell their son and that was, "Go be a fireman." Plenty of nights on midnights. I wish I had listened to him, but I'm glad I got into this line of work and it is because of my father. So tried to do a good job and thank you guys again for your support. Thank you.
I guarantee the mayor of Arlington Heights never give out chocolates today. That's right. That's why your son picked a good department. Arlington Heights is considered Elk Grove's favorite suburb. So you're fine, no problem. So with that said, there you go, Mike. The kids, family, even your mom and dad.
All right, sounds good.
Good job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Next, I'm gonna have Sergeant Dan Doherty come down to the podium. Dan has been with us for nine years. He was hired in July of 2012. You also got a You also, uh, uh, got hired and the next day off you had a holiday, right? Very nice. Wish I got that deal. Yeah. Uh, Dan's got a bachelor's degree in law enforcement, justice administration from Western Illinois University. He was also a graduate assistant for Western Illinois University, master's degree in law enforcement and justice administration. He, uh, earned a life-saving award for CPR on a subject that he saved in our business park. Um, even though we're not firemen, we save a lot of people, don't we, Dan? Yes, we do. Just saying, chief. We also, uh, Dan was assigned as a youth investigator, a juvenile detective, and he was also a school resource over at Elk Grove High School from August two thousand and seventeen to December twenty. Some of the projects that Dan, um, institutionalized over at the high school was our police practicum, which allowed students in, interested in the career in law enforcement to complete a hands-on practicum with our police department and see various aspects of law enforcement. Dan's promoted to the afternoon shift. He's married with two children, so.
Schmitty, who would have been the, try to remember who the police officer over at the high school was back in the seventies. He was there a long time.
Yeah, it was Ingleth, right?
Jack Romi. Romi, that's right. You enjoy it?
Oh, yeah.
Kids are unique. They are.
Yes, they are.
Okay, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dan Doherty.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police Sergeant.
Police Sergeant.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cookin' DuPage.
The counties of Cookin' DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge.
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police Sergeant.
Police Sergeant.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So I don't know if I can type, uh, top, uh, Mike McIntyre's speech, but, um, I do want to thank, uh, the mayor, Chief Walsh, uh, the trustees and the fire and police commission for giving me this opportunity. I've only been here nine years, working, um, might start my tenth year soon, but it's been a great experience so far. Um, I've gotten to do a lot of cool, unique things, such as working, uh, the high school as a school resource officer, work as a youth investigator, and I've got to a lot, meet a lot of great people both at the high school and, uh, at the police department as well. I mean, I've had a lot of good, uh, employ, uh, coworkers and supervisors that have helped me along my way. And it's been nice because a lot of my supervisors showed me kind of the path to become a good officer and now to become a good supervisor, so I really do appreciate that. I've had a lot of good people help me along the way. This is a great town to work for, and I'm not just saying that either. Uh, you know, it's obviously a tough time for the world and for, uh, policing in general, but this town is very supportive of us. A lot of people, I mean, just driving around every day, um, whether it be when I was in the high school or now as a supervisor, a lot of people waving, smiling, thanking us, so it really, uh, it really, uh, you know, makes the world to us, uh, for them to do that, so. And I want to thank, uh, my wife and children as well, my parents, um. My wife is putting our two little ones to bed, but she's, uh, tuning in and, and obviously it's very difficult being a spouse of a police officer, as Mike said as well, so I cannot thank her enough, and, uh, I got a long way to go here, so I'm looking forward to the future.
And he's home to the family.
They will love those, yes.
Enjoy it?
All right, thank you so much. Our next promotion goes from, uh, sergeant to commander, Chris Torres. He's been with the village for eighteen years, hired in April of two thousand and three. We stole him, stole him from the Wheaton Police Department. He came here to Elk Grove. Graduated from Loyola University in Chicago with a bachelor's degree in business, majoring in accounting and information systems. Uh, he currently, uh, is a volunteer serving on our police pension board. Uh, he has also had perfect attendance for several years. He worked as patrol officer, a field evidence technician, range officer, and he is a taser instructor. Uh, he has received a department commendation for leadership during the postal employee shooting that we had in December of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, Chris was instrumental in being out there that night. Uh, he was also assigned to criminal investigations in two thousand and ten, worked as an investigator with the M-Cat team, and he was also with the Illinois State Police Metropolitan Auto Theft Task Force. Uh, promoted to sergeant in two thousand and seventeen, and now a commander, and he's married with three children, Chris Torres.
So, George, can you show us how to taser? George, would you mind?
No, yeah, we're fine. I'd be happy to volunteer.
Okay. I hear if you do like three or four once in a half, I'm like, George, we got four, come on.
We have time?
Oh.
Well, we'll have time.
Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Christopher Torres.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Commander.
Commander.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cookin' DuPage.
Counties of Cookin' DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Commander.
Commander.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So I apologize if this is gonna sound like, uh, an Oscar speech. Uh, I'm gonna thank some people here. Um, I'd like to thank the department, Chief Walsh, the command staff, uh, DC Gaspari, DC Garrison, Commander Burke, Nick Olson, and those retirees who've come to support us, as well as active officers who come to support us as well. Uh, I've had an opportunity to learn and prosper through their leadership throughout the years. You placed your faith in me as an officer, an investigator, and now a supervisor, and I'm greatly appreciative for the opportunities you presented to me. Uh, you don't get it here in this position without the people. Uh, just as I have been taught and mentored, I'd like to continue that on with my officers and sergeants under my command. They're the ones going out day in and day out. They've come in time and time again through this COVID outbreak, putting themselves on the front line of the pandemic, and I am truly grateful and inspired by the efforts that they put in every day. I'd like to thank my family who couldn't be here but are watching via the internet. It's not easy dealing with the hours of the calls in the middle of the night. Thank you to my wife Christine, my children, my parents, family and friends for your love and support. Thank you to the mayor and the village board for supporting the department and its endeavors. Our job is difficult and keeps getting more complex. The public has an expectation that we get it right every time, zero defects. And it's up to us to meet that challenge every day through continuous improvement. Finally, thank you to the people of Elk Grove. Our profession has been through many challenges. We've received a lot of criticism, some warranted, some not so much. But even when things get down for us, we go out into public and the people respond to us. With a wave or a simple thank you, or a drawing that your children left at our station, it may not seem much to you, but it reinforces to us every day why we do what we do. Thank you very much.
Well, Commander, as you know, in Elk Grove, we back the blue a thousand percent. Now we're gonna defund you. We're always gonna have your back, like you have ours, and there's nothing to worry about.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you.
And then finally, certainly not least, Deputy Chief Mike Garrison. So, uh, Deputy Chief Mike Garrison's been with us for twenty-six years of service here in Elk Grove. Hired in December of ninety-four, graduate from Western Illinois University, master of science degree from Tiffin University. He worked our patrol officer, he was assigned to our traffic unit, motorcycle officer, promoted to sergeant in two thousand and nine, supervised the afternoon shift. He was also a criminal investigation section supervisor, and then he commanded the afternoon shift. Uh, the last few years, he was a commander, uh, administrative commander and training coordinator, where he coordinated our ninth, ninth Kalia accreditation for the police department. And finally, Mike is a graduate from the FBI National Academy Class Two Seven Nine. I present to you Mike Garrison.
Tiffin University. George, you ever heard of Tiffin University?
It's in Georgia.
Tiffin?
Tiffin.
Or Tif- Tif- no.
T-I-F-F-I-N. What is their T? You went, I will take you to dinner to any restaurant you want.
Somebody sneaked the answer.
If you can guess this T, watch it.
I don't know.
And what about monkey behind you?
Could you just look over there for a second?
No chance, right?
Okay, now they, um, no, no chance.
And what about if I guess it?
When you're looking? Or you're gonna, are you just gonna guess?
What about if I guess it? Not looking at Tiffin, it says Tiffin on it.
Um, yeah, I'll buy, yeah, I'll buy your breakfast. What, in, when do you?
Any restaurant I want? If I guess it? Dinner?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
How you doing so far?
I'm thinking. For some reason, I'm thinking drag.
Yeah, 'cause you looked it up.
Can I, right?
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
Gibson's, here we come. Come on. Like you, I cheer.
I was gonna say.
So you don't, you don't mean there? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Michael Garrison.
Have been appointed position of?
Have been po- have been appointed to the position of?
Deputy Police Chief.
Deputy Police Chief.
In the village of Elk Grove.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cookin' DuPage.
And the counties of Cookin' DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge.
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Deputy Police Chief.
Deputy Police Chief.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I too had wrote something down, but I don't think I can follow Chris. That was a pretty awesome speech you wrote there, Chris. I would like to start off by saying thank you to the mayor, the trustees, the village manager, and the chief of police for giving me this opportunity, uh, in this leadership role to mentor and cultivate the future of our organization. Um, to those retirees that are out there, thank you for your support. Thank you for coming out tonight. Uh, you guys have done a lot for my career, and I appreciate that as well. Uh, thank you to all the men and women, um, in the police department, including the support staff. You are the foundation of this organa- of this organization. I hope you have learned as much from me as I have from you. Your hard work and dedication has made my job easy. Uh, thanks to the residents in this community. Uh, your overwhelming support in this climate, uh, that we have in law enforcement today is greatly appreciated. And finally, I would like to thank my family, Shira, Caitlin, and Michael. Uh, Caitlin, my daughter who could not be here tonight because of, uh, miscommunication on my part. But my son, Michael, is here. I realize it's not easy having both parents as police officers, uh, but I could, I could not have been more blessed to have two great kids that have endured our difficult schedules over the years. And lastly, I look forward to the challenges and rewards of this position, and thank you very much.
Mike has done a great job. You've worked your way up through the ranks. This is, well, third time, I think, I swear you another position, and, um, you really exemplify our department. And that's what we talk about that's important, from Chief Walsh to Deputy Chief Garrison, others out there. In Elk Grove, you come as an officer, you have the opportunity to advance, to grow in this community. And these gentlemen just all tonight, the ones we saw, and show how we do that, and we're very proud of that. We like that a lot. We enjoy the fact that all of our officers work so hard and look to excel and move on up, uh, move up in steps, and that's great for us. So that's why we have such a great department here in Elk Grove. That's why they're police certified forever, because we have the best. We make no bounds about it. It starts with those two gen- there are two of the three gentlemen back there who hire every one of the officers we have. These guys do it back there. They put the time, the effort in. You guys do a great job picking out nothing but the best, so thank you on behalf of this community for what you do for Elk Grove. Matter of fact, Chief Walsh is gonna have some chocolates to give to you guys, so make sure, uh, he follows through.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, again, so Mike, again, congratulations to you. It's great to have you doing this. Congratulations to all of you on your promotions for your commitment to this community and why we do so well. And Chief, you got one hell of a department. You should be very proud. You do a great job, so thank you. And Schmitty, we don't forget, you just laid the groundwork for a lot of years, so we appreciate it, and that's why we're so successful. So let's give them all a big hand. Thank you. My son's still playing baseball, right?
Yep.
How you doing? Yeah? Now, what school do you go to? Okay, so what position are you? You're a pitcher? Okay. Doing well? He's tall. Okay. Righty or lefty? Okay. Well, keep it up. I know your parents are proud and you're doing a good job, so I know it's not easy juggling that, so I gave a couple extra for you, too. So, there you go. Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Good job. Chief, there you go. Quite a few for all you guys back there. Thank you. Hey, officers, you wanna go ahead and get going? Uh, Jake, you can go. If you don't wanna stay, it's up to you. He likes you, so that's why you stayed, Jeff.
I don't blame him. He's a smart man. You did give him chocolates, right?
Hey, while everyone's leaving, before I go, trustees report, I was remiss in not giving out the phone number for the vaccination call center. Excuse me. Let me do that now. The number is eight four seven, three five seven, four two seven five. That's eight four seven, three five seven, four two seven five. It's open all night. So if you watch us replay this or whatever, call, get your appointment. Like I said, we have about five hundred openings left. So take advantage of that, get your vaccination. I know a lot of people said, hey, I can't get it, get it. Here you got an easy opportunity to get it. And with over three million people watching this board meeting, we should fill this up very quickly, so, uh, if you can, make that call quickly and get you in there, and we'll get you on the way to being safe and secure. With that said, we move on now to trustee Zarnik.
Oh. Uh, on February twenty-fourth, I attended a meeting of the Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency. Uh, it, uh, the physical year twenty twenty-two agency budget was approved, and ordinance twenty-one dash oh one was approved appropriating the funds for that physical year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, this was also the last meeting for the board chair, Arlene Jurassic, and we thanked her for her leadership and service to the agency. I also want to mention, the applications for the Zarnik Heffern scholarships are online at zarnikgolf.com and at the village's website, there, uh, as well as with the high schools counselors at, uh, Conant, Elk Grove, and St. Fighter. Uh, there's eight one thousand dollar awards to be given this year to Elk Grove residents who will be graduating from high school this year. The applications must be received by April twenty-third, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move on now to trustee listener?
No report.
Move on now to trustee?
Okay, now, this is probably, fingers crossed, the last reports you're gonna hear from my snowbox about snow, snow removal. I think we're finally turning the corner on spring, but it was a, it was, the last month was a real test of all, all, on all of us. And I think our residents and our staff, everything was, our staff was wonderful. The snowplow was wonderful, and our residents keeping up the sidewalks and the driveways and the corners and helping the fire personnel out with the fire hydrants and all in all, I think, I give us an A as a, as a community. And hopefully that will be the last. We have to think about that until next year in, in the wintertime. And we'll start looking forward to more popular things that we'll be bringing back, as I, I was happy to hear the mayor announce that it looks like we're going to be able to do our Memorial Day ceremony. I remember last year we had to do a virtual ceremony, so it'll be good, hopefully, to come back to some normalcy. Looking forward to the farmer's market that'll be coming this June again. And that's my, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Fighter.
The Community Character Coalition is going to have their virtual carnival. As I think most of you know, over the last several years, they've had an in-person carnival at the pavilion where they've brought in hundreds of young people and their parents, and they've had a great time. It was a very successful event. Because of COVID nineteen, they couldn't have one like that this year. However, members of the organization said, let's have a virtual carnival. Let's do something where we can at least get the kids involved in something that might be fun and something that they can learn. So we decided to have a virtual carnival on Sunday, March twenty-eighth at three PM. And, uh, it's going to be hosted by a magician. We've had him in the past. He's very, very good, and he's going to intertwine with his magic tricks, lessons on character. And so we'll be all brought together that way. And it'll be one that the young people could watch on their computers. Now, to make this work, we need everyone that's gonna be doing this and parents to help them to register- and parents to help them to register in advance for this. You need to register in advance, and there's going to be um lots of information on social media. There'll be information passed out or sent out in the District Fifty-nine schools. And there also will be um all kinds of materials on our village website about this event. And it's one that we're gonna push really hard to try to get as many kids involved as possible and see if this works. This is an experiment. We don't know if it'll work. But we're gonna try really hard because we think it would be some kind of a fun event for the kids and a totally safe event where they won't have to take a chance uh about getting sick. Once you register, then you'll be given a link to go to a Facebook site. You will not have to be a member of Facebook, not at all. It's just gonna be a link for this event that you would just have to click to after you register. And you'll be getting this information, and it should be a great event. So that's something I wanted to let everyone know. Also, we have this year because of uh um some really nice donors like Shin Yuen and a company uh uh an industrial company in the industrial park and because of a microphone brewery, we have eight thousand dollars in scholarships to give out this year. And we discussed, how should we do that? Do we wanna make it eight one thousand dollar scholarships? Or do we want to maybe make it four two thousand dollar scholarships? And we really thought about this, and we thought about the, the expenses of college are so high right now that what we would do is just go this year with um four two thousand dollar scholarships. And all the materials for this, how to register, will be out at the schools, and will be on the website, and it'll be a lot of publicity about that. And I'll have more information about that at our next meeting. And one last item to uh make trustee Zarnik happy. Uh our uh Community Character Coalition is preparing a float to be, they have a committee to do this for the hometown parade, and it looks like we're gonna have the parade, so she'll be very happy like that. It was kinda hard to put it together, but they've, they're gonna do it for you.
You made my day.
And that concludes my report, Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, trustee Fighter. Move on now to trustee Schmidt.
Yes, I'd just like to follow up on trustee Prochno's report about uh the weather breaking and snow melting. Another sign of spring is coming this Sunday. Just remind everybody, we turn our clocks forward this Sunday.
Good point.
So uh just remind everybody, on Sunday, March fourteenth, and that concludes my report.
Spring ahead.
Real good point.
Spring ahead.
Spring ahead.
And last but definitely, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Oh, I can't talk about the snow because everybody else talked about it, so I think I'll talk about Oktoberfest. I'm assuming that we're gonna be starting to plan since we're still planning the parade and Oktoberfest, so I guess this is more to staff, and we need to dust off the old plans from last year and start working on it now because it's a uh quite a thing to put together. So hopefully, like you said, we'll be back to normal by the summer, so hopefully at the end of September, we'll be able to do this. So uh I'll have more information at the next meetings, but we're planning on having Oktoberfest. That's it?
Thank you. Uh move on now to accounts payable warrant. First one is February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one.
I move reapprove the accounts payable warrant for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of two million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee listener. Uh Lloyd, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Fighter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passed six to nothing. Then we move on now to accounts payable warrant of March ninth, twenty twenty-one.
I move repay the accounts payable warrant of March ninth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of five hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee listener, and without objection, we record the vote previously demonstrated, six to nothing. Now we move on to concern agenda. Tonight we have items A as in Apple through E as in Edward. I need a motion.
Oh, look.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Fighter, second by trustee listener. Any questions, comments, concerns? Anybody in the audience? Mr. Petzger, how you doing tonight, my friend?
Excellent.
Good to see you. Um and without objection, we record the vote previously demonstrated, six to nothing. There's no items on the regular agenda? Any items on the plant commission zoning board, Mr. Rommel? Thank you. Move on Youth Committee, trustee Frankie.
Uh well, everybody else talked about their scholarships. Uh we have seven one thousand dollar scholarships still available. There's only two months left, believe it or not. We've been talking about it for two months, so uh your deadline's May seventh to have uh your application into us. You can get them from the village website or at the high school career centers. Fill them out. Seven people can walk away with a thousand dollars to help for their schooling, so. Get them in as soon as you can. Don't wait till last day.
Okay, move on. Um Business Leaders Forum, trustee listener.
Uh thank you, Mayor. As the board knows, the Makers Wanted Workshop continues to meet via Zoom on Thursday mornings from nine to ten and in person at Enclave headquarters on the second Thursday of the month. Uh John Dellis has put together another uh master class on Wednesday, March seventeenth uh at five fifty-five P M until seven. This will be a Zoom meeting. Uh the class features Jenny Cutler, Executive Director of Suburban Access Incorporated. The presentation title is Rethinking Win-win Reasons and Ways to Employ and Support Capable Workers with Disabilities. If you are interested in attending, please contact Josh Grozdin, Director of Business Development, at eight four seven three five seven four zero zero five. Or you can email Josh as at J Grozdin. That's G R O D Z I N at elkgrove dot org, and that concludes my report.
Uh thank you. Cable Television Committee, trustee listener.
Uh thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I was looking through some uh S and Is uh for tonight's meeting, and I noticed for Comcast customers on March twenty-third of this year, F S two, that's Fox Sports, will be available as part of the digital starter package. Uh right now, it's a separate subscription, so uh they have some interesting programs on that, so uh hopefully what I read is correct, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move on now to Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik. Move on to Information Committee, trustee listener.
Uh thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The committee met on February twenty-fourth at nine thirty A M after a late meeting the night before to discuss the redesign options for our newsletters. Trustees Fighter, Prochno, and staff members Maggie Jablonsky, our Assistant Village Manager, and also Director of Communications. Carol Gabita, our Senior Management Analyst, and Carleen Garnadi, uh Administrative Intern, provided excellent comments and suggestions. The next step is staff will be working with a designer to create a design to meet the future needs. We expect to have a proposal for the full board to consider in a couple of months. Steve Schmidt sort of beat me on this one. I was gonna mention daylight savings time, but since he covered that so well, I will add one other thing. It's a good time to uh change the batteries on your smoke detectors. Or if you have a smoke detector with a ten-year battery or a smoke detector that does not require a battery, this is a good time to clean the detector by following the directions provided by the manufacturer. I have the ten-year ones, and I use a can of compressed air to just blow out any dust that may get in there over the last six months. And uh oh, one other thing.
Bless you.
Bless you. Neighborhood Watch, the next virtual meeting is scheduled for March twenty-fourth at seven P M. And as trustee Prochno was talking about our snow uh report again, I uh look back to see what the temperature was on February ninth, a month ago, compared to March ninth, which we had meetings both nights. In February, the high was nineteen and the low was three. And in today, the high was sixty-eight and the low was fifty-seven, so what a difference a month makes.
I'll take this month.
And that, that concludes my report, and there's no snow left either.
There is a little bit, little pockets of snow.
Well, there's those mountains in the parking lots. They take forever to.
Thank you, Meterologist Listener.
Thank you. I learned that from our fire chief. He's a good man, how to do that.
Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Fighter.
Just a uh short reminder for all of us about how important it is to recycle. Plastic containers that end up in landfills take fifty to eighty years to disintegrate. Aluminum cans take two hundred to five hundred years in a landfill. Plastic bottles, four hundred and fifty years. And plastic bags, two hundred to up to a thousand years. So just think about those kind of statistics and what they mean in terms of the importance of recycling. You know, we all can do a part on that. Uh so I'm hoping that you all continue on with what you've done in the past in Elk Grove and even try to do more in recycling. It's a very important thing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So Mr. Kniggebacher, you've been watching that? Obviously, there's a thousand years here. What, you're about halfway through it?
He timed it.
Yeah, it's working? Okay. Uh Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Looking forward to our hometown parade, and it's scheduled for Saturday, September eighteenth uh at two P M. Uh Community Character Coalition are the grand marshals of the parade, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary Fan Zoning Committee, trustee Prochno. Mr. Robb, pay attention.
Well, now I gotta really think about what I'm gonna say. No, actually, the J, the, our, did you have a question?
No, I forgot.
Go ahead.
What'd you forget?
We did plan a parade meeting now that we can finally get together. I'm sorry. Um our parade meeting will be Monday, April fifth at five thirty P M in the lower level of the Charles Etic Municipal Building. Because of um early voting, we're gonna do it in rooms probably A, B, or C uh rather than E. That, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Trustee Prochno?
Okay, the J P Z committee has been meeting on two different subjects um for the last month or so, and the first one being the short-term rentals. Uh what brought to our attention was the Airbnb, some of the stories that have been going around of problems that other communities have had with Airbnbs and partying and different type of rental situations. So uh the committee was asked to address the situation of whether we even wanted to have short-term rentals in the community. Uh I'd, we've had two meetings so far of the committee. At the first meeting, staff overwhelmingly recommended not to allow short-term rentals in the community. And among discussion on the three committee members, I think we agreed with that recommendation. We met once again to talk with the village attorney about the wording of how we might draw up an ordinance to control this sort of thing and what defines a short-term rental um in terms of how many days a short-term rental would be. And at this point, I would, I would ask the mayor if we should um recommend to our village attorney to draw up an ordinance and pursue uh approving that ordinance as a whole board.
Is there any questions or um issues on the rest of the board members that weren't part of the committee they would have tonight? You all got the minutes for the finding? Someone's comfortable?
Very.
Okay, I need a motion to prepare attorney, prepare necessary ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee list, or Zarnik. All favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record show you an ass approval. Thank you, the committee and trustee Prochno, for a job well done on that.
Oh, thank you. Um the second issue that we've been having meetings on is the recreational sale of cannabis within our community. We had a referendum on the, on the last, at the last election, and by almost, I think it was sixty-seven percent, it was recommended by our um village that they would approve, they would like to approve having recreational sales within the community. We have no ordinances or rules about that yet. We've had two meetings to discuss it. We've had some expert um information on the issue. Uh so we've gotten reports from staff on the issue. After two meetings, we went um to a vote, and we voted two to one to support the recreational sale. But being that it's a split vote, we take it to the board and ask if there's, should be some further discussion, if you'd like to have a committee of the whole to discuss this issue as a board.
Okay. The recommend, uh the recommendation of the committee was to move forward the proposal for allowing recreational marijuana to the board. What we'll do is we'll set up our next board meeting, which will be on the twenty-third, and we'll have a committee of the whole meeting here in the council chambers um to discuss as a board as a whole, the recommendation from the committee. We've all got the uh minutes from the committee defining the fact. There's quite a bit of information that is provided as far as testimony, both in favor and opposed to the idea of recreational marijuana sales, and um I strongly recommend everyone study that completely. We can have a discussion, uh debate, just, you know, which way to proceed further. That night, I would assume we could come, I hope, a consensus out of the board whether to have the attorney prepare um an ordinance or not. The committee could also turn down the recommendation of moving forward. Um so that'd be something we'll discuss that night. And my hope is we could get it done in one evening. If for some reason we need more than one evening, we'll obviously make that available. But I hope would be if everyone came prepared with other questions, concerns, comments, question, you know, information they wanna give. And saw that ready that night, we can probably handle it that night. So we'll set the time up.
And may I add?
Yes.
If any board member has any specific concern or question that they feel hasn't been covered in the information we've provided, please either contact me or contact staff so that we can have an answer to your concern.
And copies of it to the board before.
Absolutely.
The meeting, so we can wrap this up that night. So with that said, um the board will accept, I will accept the recommendation to the board and to go ahead and set up a meeting at the committee of the whole on March twenty-third. We'll set the time, Tom, as we get closer, whether we're gonna have a five o'clock, five thirty, whatever, um see how much time it may take. So we'll get ready for that. Okay, anything further?
I do not, please. So I do have a question. I think I have telecommunications under my listing as, as telecom- telecommunications facilities. What is that in regard to?
I think it was back several years, trustee Prochno, where we were looking at a cellular antenna in a industrial park. Anyway, I think times have changed, and you can probably have removed from the agenda.
Would that be possible?
Yeah, if you recommend it, we can have it.
I would recommend we remove that from the J P Z.
Okay, any objections? So item C we moved, item A and B will leave on until the board takes final action, and that should be good.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. I know a lot of towns went through a lot, went discussing cannabis. Um the committee did a thorough job, and I commend them on the uh quickness in accomplishing this. I know a lot of towns took quite a few months, but you thoroughly went through it and the time you done it, and we appreciate all the copies to the board.
Well, credit to staff for providing all the information that we requested in a timely manner.
Okay. Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Zarnik.
No report.
No update on airport. Uh still going through ONCC for flight quiet. As you said, we look at the Midsummer Classic, Classic Series coming this summer, open up with Daughtry on the Fourth of July. We're in negotiations, discussing a council replaced K C Sunshine Band. Then we have Loverboy, and we finish up with the iconic Beach Boys. Special Events Committee, we're moving forward with Memorial Day celebration. No items on the liquor commission. Uh report from village manager? And our village clerk wants to update us on the early voting hours that take place soon.
Early voting will begin on March twenty-second through April fifth. The hours, uh if the location is still in the same room, uh the south, east, southwest entrance. I get my bearings. And uh the hours are Monday through, Monday through Saturday, ten A M to four P, uh nine A M to five P M, sorry. I have vaccination on the brain, I think, and uh Sunday from ten A M to four P M. So the hours are posted on the website. We will have everything uh ready to go. Social distancing will be rebuilt, will be maintained until everybody gets vaccinated, so should be fine.
And for the public, um there are no contest elections for the village, for the library, and the park district, but there are contest elections on school boards. As we tell you all the time, two-thirds of your property tax bill is from the school districts. So it's important. It's our young people. It's young people's future. So please, remember, vote. Uh they shorten the hours, I see, for early voting now for this election compared to the presidential election. Yet this election, that you had people that actually have the most influence on your day-to-day life, and that's local government. So please get out the vote. It's important to do so. Uh Mr. Kniggebacher, please look. As usual, nothing. Nothing on village attorney. New business items. See, trustees have business items, bring up. During this point, I had to remind people, we're still taking appointments, vaccinations. Any updated number, Mr. Robb? Nope. So, we know we have about 500 vaccination available for next Tuesday. People have been saying they wanna get it, wanna get it. Here's your chance. All you gotta do is be 65 years old living in Elk Grove. No other requirements. You get vaccination. You get the good Pfizer shot here in Elk Grove at the Park District. Again, the number is eight-four-seven-three-five-seven-four-two-seven-five. Eight-five-seven-three-five-seven-four-two-seven-five. For other people, if you're optimistic, you can get another round of vaccinations. For other people to take advantage, but this time, we're taking care of our seniors first. Okay, any public comment? Helen, everything good? We'll see you about a month and a half? We'll be there. Looking forward to it. Lot to go through. Hopefully, we'll be pretty open by that point. So, keep our fingers crossed. Mr. Petzel, are you doing excellent? You know that, Mr. Kniggebacker? He looks good, doesn't he?
He does. I saw him earlier today, too.
That's good.
Big thank you for everybody that's working on the COVID vaccination.
They're doing a great job. They're volunteering the time, putting extra time. Thank you. We'll pass it on, Paul. That's nice you said that. And Mr. Emo Shiavo, how you doing today?
Excellent.
Wow, it's spreading.
All I know is I get a kick out of, Emo gets the right chair every time. Notice that? Notice that, Mr. Kniggebacker?
I love my chair. I love it.
Yeah, he's got a good chair there. So, okay. With that said, we did pretty good, especially since the mayor is waiting up here for the board to get up here on time. But we'll learn, we'll learn.
We'll never live that one down.
Nope, never. It was nice to have a busy summer today. They'll call for maybe a little snow this weekend. But we know we're at the end of the dark tunnel, looking at the light for both winter and COVID. So, with that, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Frankie. Lloyd, please call the roll.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Mr. Kniggebacker, Mr. Trustee Zarnik, I seem to like having a garbage can at this location. So...
Yeah, you can sit out there.
Yeah, maybe difficult for you in the future, but we'll work on that for you. Uh, folks...
You're not making a comparison, are you?
No, 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 no. We like this better. Motion to adjourn, passed six to nothing. Folks, have a good evening, meeting adjourned. Okay, Mr. Robb, we gotta go quickly.